All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June Mayor and City Council Meeting. I will ask Councilman Vigliotti to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Let's see, to start this evening, let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for. We'll begin with a review of the minutes of the May 6th and May 11th regular meetings. I'll seek a motion from the council.
I make a motion to pass both sets of minutes.
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second to pass both. I will open it up for comment, and I will begin the comment. I did notice in the... Standby. In the regular meeting, so the May 11th meeting, under legal report, the way that it reads, Attorney Gallow advised that a solution for the master plan issues with the Tawnytown Crossing Project has been reached that will allow for the project to proceed when the Maryland State of Emergency is lifted. I feel like we're missing something there because it seems to read that it can proceed once the emergency is lifted, but that's not the case. Mr. Gallow, can you remember and clarify what you were saying there?
I don't think it had to be related to the state of emergency. I think it could be after the Maryland Department of the Environment has, whatever word you want to put in there, has consented or agreed, or, yeah, but it's not the emergency.
I believe that the state of emergency came in, we talked about, we were going to have so much time after the state of emergency is lifted to put out our plan or to submit our plan. Is that correct, Mr. Gallow?
That's right. That's for the sewer issue is that we have so much time for the, after the state of the emergency.
Okay. So I think at this point, if we would strike the words, "when the Maryland State of Emergency is lifted," and replace the comma with a period, that's something I offer as amendment. I'll ask Councilman Vigliotti if he would like to accept that amendment as part of his motion.
I will certainly accept that amendment.
Thank you very much, Councilman Fuller. Would you still second based on that?
Yes, I would.
All right. So the motion by Councilman Vigliotti, the second by Councilman Fuller, to approve as amended, is there any other discussion from the council regarding these minutes? All right. Hearing none, all in favor signify with your thumb up. And that is unanimous. All opposed, we're good. Five to zero. And moving right along. Pardon me, I'm trying to track down the agenda for tonight because somehow that got misplaced. So bear with me for just a second as I locate that. There it is. All right, moving into our resolutions, ordinances, and agreements up for adoption this evening, we have ordinance 052020. That is our noise ordinance. I will seek a motion.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Haynes. I'm going to give the second to Mayor Portem Foster. Is there any discussion on ordinance 052020 noise? Councilman Vigliotti, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of very, very brief things. Well, the first thing I wanted to ask was that I know that at our Wednesday meeting, Councilman Haynes had proposed lowering the fee from $100 to $50, and I was just curious if he had any follow-up on that or any additional thoughts on that, and if that was something he'd like to offer as an amendment.
Councilman Haynes, you've been requesting?
Councilman Vigliotti, I appreciate you bringing that up. The reason I did not include that as an amendment tonight is because I spoke with a few residents, and they felt that the $100 fee would be sufficient. And so after consulting with them, I've decided to rescind my previous sentiment, and I think that the proposal is appropriate the way that it is.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Vigliotti?
Yeah, just two more things. First of all, I know that in our discussions, we'd mentioned a number of other things that we might include as exceptions within the body of the ordinance itself. For example, seasonal vehicular operation, business activities that are unable to be conducted at other times. And maybe like as a general statement, any exceptions that are granted by the city over the course of time. I don't know if everybody would be amenable to including those within the body of the ordinance. And if so, I'd like to offer that as an amendment. I'm not, I also want to throw this out to Jay because I'm not exactly sure, or maybe you, Brad, because I'm not exactly sure where we could fit those things in. But I feel like they are things that should be mentioned as exceptions. Oh, and then sporting and park events too, because sometimes those go late into the evening.
Well, and that's the whole reason behind the permit process, is that people can request the exception. So instead of putting it in specifically, exceptions that would tie us to anything, this leaves it rather open-ended and a little bit more flexible for us. So I believe what you're asking for is covered under the permit section.
Okay. But specifically, what about business activity that you can conduct? Like, for example, if a truck's got to unload at like four in the morning or something, I feel like that's almost something that should be something standard in the ordinance.
Something standard in the ordinance?
Well, something that, you know, like a business shouldn't have to come in to apply for a permit to unload their trucks at three in the morning if there's no other time for them to do it.
Well, I mean, it would probably be as simple as them asking for an exception on their own. It could be a broad permit if they feel to do that, as opposed to every time. But it would be helpful for us to consider what effect that activity has on the surrounding properties. So instead of us simply exempting it all over, it would kind of help us understand what effect it may have on neighboring, whether it's residences or other businesses. So this kind of gives us a chance to be aware of those things.
And that is something that would be covered under the permitting process?
I believe, I mean, the permit process is essentially for us to permit exceptions to the ordinance.
All right, well, I'm willing to let, I'm willing to let that go. But if we do have any concerns or issues with it, you know, I guess we can offer amendments to it in the future if we need to, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, just like anything that we codify, it can be revisited whenever, whenever, however often. That's perfectly acceptable.
Okay, all right, I'm satisfied with that. I just want to make sure that some of these, you know, again, that these exceptions were accounted for in some way, shape, or form. And then my last thing, you know, and understanding the permitting process, the applications and all that are going to be resolved, because I know some of the things that we talked about Wednesday night were things that were going to be worked out in the future, like we did with, like we did last month with the, I'm sorry, a couple of months ago with the special events. So the one outstanding question that I still am trying to find an answer for is, let's say that a, let's just say as an example, that Walmart decides, any multimillion-dollar corporation decides to open up a store, right? And they consistently violate the noise ordinance, and they don't want to pay the fine, and they don't want to deal with us. How do we, what's the enforcement mechanism in a situation where we are contending with something that's bigger than just, you know, a local store?
Mr. Gallow, I'll refer to you for that. When we start dealing with large corporations that refuse to abide by our local code. Okay, I'll miss him. I think if that case, I mean, there are certain legal... I'm sorry.
Was I talking, is there a delay? Is that the problem?
Okay, you were MIA for a minute, but now you're here. Go ahead.
I saw you. The idea is a big business that would come in, is going to be subject to a plan and manner restrictions beyond our noise ordinance. We deal with that with truck deliveries, we deal with that with the unloading and unloading dumpster pickup. So I think it would be handled through that process, but if somebody violated our zoning or our code, we take them to court like anybody else.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman, does that satisfy?
That does satisfy me. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Councilman Hale, did you have anything to add?
I did not, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else from council have any comments on ordinance 052020? All right. Hearing none, all in favor signify with a thumbs up. And those opposed, thumbs down, and is unanimous in favor. Thank you, council. All right, moving into our monthly water allocation, resolution 2020-07, this is the allocation for June of 2020. I'll seek a motion.
So moved. Motion to approve.
I believe Mayor Portem Foster beat you to that. I will look for a second.
I'll second.
Second.
Councilman Hale beat you to that one as well. All right, now, to clarify from Wednesday night, I believe everyone received the corrected numbers. So what's being approved are the numbers that Mr. Wepr provided to us after the Wednesday meeting. Did everyone get a copy of that?
Yes, sir.
That acknowledges. Very good. Any comments on the water allocation? All right, all in favor signify with thumbs up. And is unanimous again, and all opposed, very good. Ms. Wepr, do you have anything to give us for a city manager report in addition to Wednesday?
Just a very, a couple of quick updates. First off, clarify, when I've talked about the street damage from the dump trucks the other evening, the, one of the streets, it's Keenan, and actually O'Brien, not Crimson. As you go around the bend on Crimson, where the construction site is, that's where it switches to O'Brien. So the damage is actually on O'Brien Avenue. The, we had a progress meeting here at the city office today. We are awaiting a building inspection for the second-floor offices, so hopefully we will be a day or so away from moving finance staff up to the second floor so that demolition of the ground floor can begin. And there's still some final paint and touch-ups to do, some punch list items on the second floor, but we're hoping to get a partial UNO to move people upstairs and keep things moving. A bit of good news, the county received word that the coronavirus relief fund came through. They were awarded everything they requested, and the city will be getting a pass-through from that. We didn't have a lot to submit as far as additional expenses that we've incurred related to the virus, but we do have some police overtime, some personal protective equipment, and equipment that the Police Department and Public Works Department are using to disinfect vehicles. So we do, we are looking to have $34,000 in reimbursable expenses come through. So have a meeting later this week with the county to talk about how that's going to be facilitated, but little bright spot there. And jumping back to the, let's see, the city office building, in case folks haven't driven by downtown today, the sidewalk, the new sidewalk was poured, and the bollards have been installed in front of the building and along the side, and the ones out front, just if you do drive by, will have decorative sleeves applied to them in the future. So what's there right now is just the functional part, and they will have a decorative cap going forward. So don't, don't drive by and think about how ugly it is. That's just the temporary appearance. So, and that's it for me unless folks have any questions.
On Keenan Street, the damage that you referred to, is that currently being blocked off with a couple of large traffic cones?
Yes.
Okay, I drove by last night, and that's why I suspected that was. Very good. Anyone else from council have questions for Mr. Wepr on either his report or the departmental reports this evening? Councilman Vigliotti?
This is actually just kind of related to what Jim had just talked about, but also when we move into the essential employee policy. Is, and again, because I'm not, you know, quite sure what you guys discussed or talked about, or what, you know, how far that reimbursable fund goes. But would that include any kind of hazard pay that's related to COVID? Is that something that we could submit as part of what we're requesting? Or is this a completely different, a completely different kind of fund?
Had we been providing hazard pay when we made application, we may have been able to include that. But the number of the list of expenses that qualified was pretty limited for us. Without going back, looking at that criteria again, I can't say with certainty. But I don't think that incentive program type stuff would qualify.
No, the, anything like hazard pay did not qualify for it, unless it had been standardized by the state. Otherwise, you'll have municipalities doing $5000 bonuses for everybody and then passing that bill along to the state. So no, hazard pay was not included in that ability, but very good question nonetheless.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions for the city manager or departmental reports? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Wepr. Mr. Gallow, if you could provide us with your report this evening?
Yes, first let me apologize for dropping off the meeting at the last time. You guys exhausted my battery power, so maybe there should be a rule that you can only use 25% with all your talk, or something like that. I'm going to keep it brief and update you on a few things. The first one, I'll start with the good news and go from there to the bad news. The good news is the Davis matter. We know that that has been dragged longer. There's going to be a status conference next week on the Davis matter, and at that point in time, there might be some plea or at least be a trial date set. I'm going to take the lead in amassing our reimbursements for restitution, because we want to submit that to the state's attorney's office, and hopefully make that a condition of whatever has to happen. And hopefully that will resolve the situation with the attack on the town hall. Otherwise, if we do not get our reimbursement or restitution, we're going to have to have a discussion about a civil suit to recall that. So that looks like that might take, take care of our actions, and that should happen next week. The next thing is the Creekside Project, which has been finished for a while, and you know, the residents are living there. We finally, which was basically, that is, needs to be, so that's been delivered to the city. And then the other is a release saying all the subcontract and everyone have been paid, so there's no mechanic's leans on the... So you'll see on your items of new business, there is an action item to release the letter of credit and holding no more letter of credit. The Public Works Department has already reviewed everything, so all the administrative things are done. It's not, and that just happened today. We had, as you know, submitted a letter to MDE to try to get some type of special dispensation regarding the water and sewer master plan for Lake. And while MDE Board of broke us the bad news, he's basically, they can't give the special dispensation we need. Idea is the normal track for a plan amendment would take far longer than the deadline to get this project resolved. So we're not giving up the ship, but we're going to try to expedite something in the next week so that we can submit it. MDE kind of indicated to us that if we get something to them and they see it, they possibly can then make things happen, but they can't do it outside of the sequence. But our people have been outstanding in the last, what we call it, three weeks probably, four weeks in getting everything done. We've had weekly calls. The acting city manager, Mr. Wepr, has made sure all the comments have been lurking on. We had a special planning commission meeting virtually, and they got approval based on that. So the city has rallied all the way from the engineers to the office staff to make the project happen. And now the key is the MDE part, because we can make everything else happen. This project, while it looks like it's getting a lot of special attention, it should be noted that we've never had a project do it, do it this way, and this is the right way. They're actually going to post their bonds, get their public works agreement, and get everything in place before they record the plan. Most developers want to do it the other way. So we're going to need to push this across the line in the next three weeks, and we'll keep you updated on that. And those are the big news items that I have, unless you have any questions for me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gallow. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Gallow on his report this evening?
I hope you all could hear that, because nobody's talking.
You can't hear me? All right, we'll pretend that he can. Any questions from the council on his report? All right, hearing none. Very good. We shall move on. Into old business, we have up in front of us the essential employee leave policy. You all received an email from Mr. Wepr outlining what other municipalities in the county have done or are considering doing. Would anyone like to begin a discussion on this? Councilman Vigliotti?
Actually, to be honest, what I'd like to do is I'd like to ask, you know, Jim and Jay if they maybe have any thoughts or perspective on this, because I know this touches on, you know, every, you know, numbers, but then I know that they also maybe have some personal perspective or experience that they could share with us about, or share with us about this, excuse me.
All right, Mr. Wepr, we're going to begin with you.
Oh, yeah. I have not heard a lot of comments from employees about this, but from the, I have heard from the Police Department, as most other, all the, all the other municipalities who do have police departments have done something for those departments. That's what got me started to look into it and have those conversations with the other city managers. I would lean towards, if we decide to do something, I would lean towards a bonus-type approach rather than trying to administer some kind of leave policy. I think it will be much easier to manage that. I don't expect that we can really equalize a benefit, so to speak, because we've had people who, some people got a large amount of administrative leave, some people very little. I think that's the first thing we would look at is, you know, who, who did not, I'll use the term, benefit from administrative leave throughout the whole pandemic. And, and then kind of work our way down from there. We had some people who were working three-day work weeks, some people who were working, you know, three days on, four days off, or vice versa, rather. So it's a very wide-ranging, I guess, benefit, if you will, that people received as far as administrative leave. And I don't think it's realistic that we can equalize everybody, but I think doing something to show appreciation for the folks who came in and/or even worked there full-time remotely would really be appreciated by the employees.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gallow, do you have anything you wish to add to the conversation?
Yeah, let me give you some perspectives from around the state. You all know I represent several other municipalities, and your response in Tawnytown has been the most, most complex and unique in the fact that you really tried to deal with departments and individuals specifically, as opposed to across the board. And what I mean by that is, some municipalities, they had essential employees report as normal, and if you were non-essential, you were furloughed. And you went on, you were separated from employment, you went on unemployment, you had to do your own Cobra insurance, and they still sit there at that. And so they looked at it as it was a, you know, not quite the family approach that we're taking, but a very approach that was fiscally sound. Then I had some towns that operated exactly as they had before, and they just structured the shifts so that everybody in the town hall worked in the town hall, and nobody else was allowed in. All the public works people worked, and they worked in separate teams, different, doing different things around the town, so you work with the same guy every day type of thing. So that one was one where there really wasn't an impact. And then the other towns, they've done bonuses, to echo what Jim has said. Leave doesn't really work. We need people to fill the shoes and do the job, and so if you're protecting their leave, they won't be able to take it, and eventually you're going to be dealing with it as a cash out at the end anyway. And we have to carry leave, just like we carry salaries. I mean, it's still on the books as the same type of money. So people really appreciate the money. That's what they can use. The interesting part with a lot of my towns is they made it very black and white, and this sounds terrible, I guess, if you're an employee, but they basically said, if you worked normally, you got a bonus. And it was really focused on the police departments who couldn't not come to work. They might have had an altered shift, but they still had to work. In fact, they were affected because they don't have overtime with court and things like that. And that would mean they also gave it to department heads that had to show up every single day. They actually had to physically come here. They didn't give it to people who worked remotely at home, because, you know, nobody is casting aspersions, but the idea is if you're working at home, and yeah, it's a different work environment, probably more stressful with your kids and dogs and everything like that, but that was a benefit already. If you had any administrative leave given to you, so you maybe worked a shift of three days in and two days out, or vice versa, they said, well, you've already gotten accommodations. The other thing that I've advised all my clients is no one calls it hazard pay. That just creates an unintended consequence down the road, not only in precedent, but if somebody would, you know, basically get COVID, or whatever we're going to call it, then they say, well, I encountered that, and you called it a hazard pay, does that lead to easier workers' comp claims as it leads to those types of things? So, I mean, to cover the gamut, most places in our town, maybe whether they're administrative or not, if they worked a normal shift like the police officers, they are given a bonus, and the bonus is supposed to equal everything else. That's the idea.
All right, with that input, does the council wish to request more information specifically to who was affected in what way? Or does someone wish to make a recommendation or proposal this evening? Councilman Haynes?
I think what would be most fair and efficient would be some type of bonus. So I would be in favor of kind of giving Mr. Wepr the green light to go ahead and flesh this out and make a more detailed proposal on how we would do this and pay for it.
Okay, Councilman, do you make that in the form of a motion, or?
I'm sorry, I was just under the impression, when we had previously talked about it, that Mr. Wepr was kind of looking for consent. Would you prefer that I make it in a motion?
I think a motion would be appropriate, yes.
Okay, then I make a motion that we direct Mr. Wepr to develop a bonus proposal for employees for the COVID response.
Okay, would anyone like to offer a second?
Second.
Okay, so as we move into discussion on that, let's narrow that down a little bit if we could. Mr. Gallow gave us a lot of recommendations of what others were doing in terms of who was eligible for said bonuses and things like that. Do you wish to offer any guidance to Mr. Wepr on it? Or are you just kind of letting him, Mr. Wepr, you?
I would like that bonus to be something across the board. I don't want to see a scale kind of thing. In other words, if he comes up with a figure, I want it to be everybody across the board.
I don't think that's, that's a fair way to do things, because many either worked very minimal schedules without taking a decrease in pay, whether it was five days on, five days off, or they only worked three days a week instead of five, they already received essentially a benefit by not having to work those extra days. So I think giving them an additional bonus is going to be quite unfair for everyone else that had to work all of their regular hours and then some.
I see a problem with that, and people will complain, it wasn't my choice. I see a problem with that, and people will complain it wasn't my choice to go home.
Well, I understand, but they still.
I think you create a morale situation.
Well, I think we, I mean, we're going to create a morale situation anyway by those who had to continue showing up and those who did not have to continue showing up. By them saying, well, why couldn't I, you know, have two days paid off like they did every single week? It's, I mean, we need to look at this at a much more equitable fashion. I don't think making it general across the board is equitable at all. I don't consider that the right answer. Councilman Haynes?
I hear what Mayor Portem Foster is saying, and I feel for it because I like the language that Mr. Gallow used. We've kind of had a family approach to this. But, Mr. Mayor, I also hear what you're saying, and I feel like maybe a fair balance to strike would be to direct Mr. Weprick to come up with some type of proposal that gives a bonus to employees who were exposed to the public during the known period of the epidemic. So any employees that interacted with the public who were potentially at risk in any way, shape, or form, I think is much more justifiable.
That's going away from us making them eligible based on schedules or what other benefits they had, again, by working or having paid days off that others didn't have. When you look at those who had to interface with the public, that's a little more difficult because it was whether by their choice or not if they did that. There are some jobs here where they don't interface with the public, but they had to show up a single day. And, you know, look at the treasures department. You know, they worked more hours, they still had some days off, but they don't interface with the public. So I don't know if that's the best method. Anyone else? Councilman Hale?
Mr. Mayor, rest of the council. Jim, you were looking for guidance. I like the idea of the bonus so that, you know, the office staff's not trying to track all this and use it up before the end of 2022. So I agree, if an employee was paid to be off, that's an awesome benefit, you know, work a week, off a week. That's quite the bonus, in my opinion. So then we go to the people that had to be there every day, all day. That's, the people who were able to stay off work and still get paid for it, I think it's a very decent gesture. I'm glad we did that. I'm very proud that we did that. Jim, I think it sort of comes down on you to let us know who did not have the benefit of being work a week, off a week, and be paid for it. And that we can resolve this very quickly.
Keeping in mind, he can't give us specifics at this point. Go ahead, Mr. Weprick.
That would certainly be part of coming up with a more solid proposal would be to review the payroll records, the timesheets, and see, you know, who indeed did or did not benefit from the administrative leave. And even among that group, there were some people whose window of leave started earlier than others. And it will be very challenging to try to do something equitable. I think it's more a recognition for those who were not able to have time off because of their essential function. In some cases, such as with the police department, while they certainly tried to minimize contact with the public, that still was required. It's just part of the job. Even though we've tried to minimize it and defer certain things that were not, I'll say, critical at the moment. I think that's why most of the police departments have been either awarded leave or a bonus because they, just by nature of the job, they have to interact with the public. Public works, we've had the ability to suspend certain activities, such as going into individuals' homes and things like that for meter checks or meter replacements or replacing the MXUs on the water meters. So we're not doing that. So we're trying to keep them still isolated from the public the best we can, but they're still out there on the streets and things like that. So getting back to the administrative leave, certainly that's going to be a component to whatever proposal I come back with next month.
All right, with that, we'll be looking for the proposal for Mr. Weprick on a future agenda, and then we can further that discussion when we see it. Councilman Bigliotti, did you want to add anything to this before we move on?
Just very briefly to say that I do agree with the position that you've taken, Mr. Mayor, and I was going to make a similar case that Councilman Hale made as well. But I also wanted to ask, as a matter of procedure, do we need to make a motion to table this for next month?
Did you finish the vote on this? I know you had a motion from Mr. Haynes.
We do have a motion at the current time, and I believe we have a second. Claire, can you clarify? Did we have a second to that motion? Okay, very good. So I will go to the original maker of the motion and ask if you want to proceed with that or if you want to withdraw and table instead.
I will withdraw and table instead, Mr. Mayor. I think it's more appropriate that we just give Jim consensus to kind of have a proposal that we can have in front of us. That way, we can talk about specifics in a much better manner.
Very good. And back to Claire, who made the second on that motion?
I did.
Okay, Councilman Hale? Very good. With the motion rescinded, do you therefore rescind your second as well, then?
I do as well, sir.
All right, very good. With that, we'll just seek consensus to direct Mr. Weprick to come back with a more formal proposal. Do we have consensus from the council? All right, very good. We do have unanimous consensus on that. Thank you, everyone, for your discussion there. Moving into our new business, we have our monthly financial report. I will seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second, please.
A second?
Very good. We have a motion from Councilman Hale, a second from Councilwoman Fuller. Any discussion on the monthly financial report? Very good. All in favor, signify with your thumbs up. And that is unanimous. Thank you, council. Moving on to our accounts payables, I will again seek a motion.
So moved.
And a second, please. All right, we have a motion from Councilman Bigliotti and a second from Mayor Portem Foster. Any discussion on the accounts payables? All right, hearing none. All in favor, signify with thumbs up. All right, and that, I believe, is unanimous. Councilman Fuller, I didn't see a vote on, oh, there we go. That is unanimous. Thank you. Your camera just keeps moving around. I don't know what's happening over there anymore. Special event approval, it was brought before us Wednesday evening, a Susan G. Komen Promise Ride from Memorial Park, scheduled on August 23rd, 2020. Of course, not knowing what's going to happen between now and then regarding state of emergency, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the special event promise ride.
So moved.
And a second, please.
Second.
You can have it, reading.
All right, motion from Councilman Hale, the second I will award to Councilman Bigliotti. Is there any discussion on the special event approval? Councilman Haynes?
This might be moot simply because if the state of emergency continues and the event can't be held, it would simply be canceled. But is there a way to maybe tentatively approve it, tentatively approve it? So that way, it's on if it can be? Or is that just not necessary?
That wouldn't necessarily, an approval from us is essentially saying, have it if you can. If for any reason they can't hold it, whether on their part or on our part, the state's part, whatever it is, that's out of our hands. We're just simply saying, we give it our blessing to move forward in whatever way. Councilman Hale?
Thank you, sir. Lorraine had written up something I'd like to share with you all, just to sort of, it goes in a lot better detail what this event is about, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Continue.
So the background on the Susan G. Komen, Komen, Maryland, this bike promise ride is going to be on August 23rd. And they will be coming through the park, coming down through town, no more than ten at a time at the park for like a rest stop. And children as young as 12 can ride in this ride. It's got police escort, that type of thing, not our police, but others that have already taken care of that. Any state highway user permit, they will take care of all that signage. They will adhere to whatever rules we have from that. But just a little bit of history, because I did not know this about the Susan G. Komen Fund. This was set up by Susan's sister. And she made a promise to her sister that she would make a bold goal, bold goal to reduce the number of breast cancer deaths by 50% in the United States by 2026. They have raised over $31 million for the state of Maryland, who also allows for real-time help with people who have been struggling with breast disease in Maryland. And worldwide, they have raised almost $988 million for global research. So I didn't know that. I was, you know, glad that Lorraine took the time to share that. This event will begin and end at Frederick Fairgrounds. And it's just a great, nice event. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman, for all that additional information. I believe we have a motion and a second on this. Is there any additional input from the council? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the special event promise ride on August 23rd? Signify with your thumbs up. Thank you very much. That is unanimous for the record. All right, moving into release of letter of credit for Creekside. I believe Mr. Gallow will lead us on that one.
Yes, I already gave you the background on some of this. And the bottom line is that development is finished, and the letter of credit needs to be released. So if you make the motion to authorize that, then the necessary documents will make that happen.
Very good. I will then seek a motion.
So moved.
All right, and a second, please.
Second?
All right, we have Councilwoman Fuller with the motion, Councilman Bigliotti with the second. Any discussion on releasing the letter of credit for Creekside? Feels like it's been a long time coming. All right, all in favor of releasing the letter of credit, signify with your thumbs up. Those opposed, it is unanimous. Let the record reflect. Thank you all. We're going to go into council member reports. I'm going to begin with Councilwoman Fuller. Do you have anything to report to us?
Well, like we mentioned earlier, we did have our emergency planning commission meeting, got some things taken care of, and are moving forward with all of those MDE issues and stuff like that. So I think that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate that. Councilman Bigliotti, do you have anything for us this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do. I have a couple of things this evening. I have the Tawny Town Police Departmental Report. So for last month, there were 524 calls for service. There were six adult arrests, and there was one juvenile arrest. All three of the academy recruits are slated to graduate next month. Details about the graduation itself and forthcoming and pending state coronavirus restrictions. The police also wanted to let everybody know that as we begin to open back up in conjunction with the state and the county, they're ready to begin accommodating events and helping out and being a face around public areas in the community again. This Friday, at the drive-in movie at Thunderhead, they'll be providing security, and they'll be, you know, doing their thing there. We also want to remind everyone that even though the carnival itself is not happening this week, the volunteer fire company is still going to be cooking and selling the amazing food that they prepare. You have to call ahead to order it and pick it up at the carnival grounds. The number to place an order is 443-974-4072. Again, that's 443-974-4072. You can find more details about the kinds of food they're serving on their Facebook page. But I think it was, you know, appropriate and important that we go ahead and give them a shout out, given that they're going to be so heavily impacted by not being able to have the carnival. As a related note to the department, I want to take a moment to offer some praise to Angela Bonarigo and Donna Rudolph, who head up Relay for Life of Tawny Town. They've always said that Relay's teams form a community, and when one team needs help, the others jump in. So as everybody knows, the young men of Silver Oak Academy have long supported this community in every number of possible ways. And the coronavirus outbreak at Silver Oak led to all of Relay's teams banding together under Angela and Donna to raise some money to provide meals for those young men as they recover. So we want to thank Thunderhead Bowling and Bestin Ben's Country Kitchen specifically for preparing those meals. And also to note that when the owners of those places learned that Silver Oak needed help, they jumped in immediately. You know, this is more evidence of the kind of community that we do live in. And of course, as everybody knows, the police department and the city also volunteer every year to help out to raise funds for Relay for Life. And two more very brief things, I just want to say, from a personal note, this is purely from a personal standpoint. And Mayor, you may have some additional thoughts about it, but as everybody knows, there was a protest in town on Saturday. It was a very peaceful and very respectful protest. And so I want to thank the protesters for being, you know, peaceful. And I also want to compliment the police because they were very professional, as they always are, and they were very accommodating of the protest. And then as a sort of a side note, there was a non-related traffic accident that happened at the same time as the protest was occurring. And our police were able to flawlessly transition to deal with the accident. And so I think they deserve a tremendous amount of credit for everything that they did. And of course, the mayor and myself were both present Saturday morning as well. And then the last thing I'll say this evening, and this is less a departmental thing and more of just a thank you to Dan and Jacob in our IT department for always making sure that we can have these meetings in the settings that we do, given the circumstances and the situation that we find ourselves in. So I wanted to extend thanks to them as well. And that is it for me this evening.
Mayor Portem Foster, do you have anything for us this evening?
As you will see from our report from Economic Development, 33 of our businesses applied for and received the $1,250 grant from Economic Development from the county. 36 businesses applied for the PPP and received grants in varying amounts from $20,000 up to as much as $87,000. These grants continually come down the pipe. Nancy and I try to keep track of them and push them out to the businesses. Just today, the state made some improvements. Apparently, there has been backlogs and log jams with the unemployment system. And they've made some improvements to that system, put out all kinds of guidelines, and now you don't have to wait to get in touch with a real person. You can talk to like a computer, and it will take your unemployment application. So that's another improvement. So things are moving along. And that's about it, economic development-wise.
All right, thank you, Mayor Portem. Councilman Hale, do you have anything for us this evening? You are muted right now.
Thank you. So we had talked about a little while back about redoing the old pavilions that are from the '50s down at the park. So in working with my good friends at the builders craft of the Tawny Town Monoxie Lodge of Asia Free and Accepted Masons, I got some news report. One of our masons, he went to his employer, Thomas Bennett and Hunter, and they're donating the 15 yards to do one of the pavilions. Still working on the cement work, as you were, the stone's underneath, and we need a small vehicle that can load tons of stuff in and out of the pavilion. At this point, we're hoping that the stone and that small loader can be, may be donated, not the old enough shore, but the cement has been. And of course, the goal will be to tackle one. And of course, the goal will be to tackle one pavilion and let's, let's see what, how, how it turns out. With the mayor and the council's approval, we'd like to do this whenever we can. It's going to take more than 10 people to do this. Once the restrictions have been lifted. And no promises on the other pavilions except for cleaning them up and painting them at this point. But perhaps we do the first pavilion and we can get some more community participation or donations or what have you. Cement's not super expensive, but greatly appreciated, again, from Thomas Bennett and Hunter. So we're going to have at least one pavilion looking shiny and brand new inside and out. Of course, we'll go through all the channels. Lorraine will coordinate and she's picked, picked out a red, white, blue theme for the pavilion. You know, they want any lines, it's going to be like a nice beige or something. But in any case, I'm not a good painter, but that's good news.
All right, thank you, councilman. And Councilman Haines, do you have anything for us this evening?
Sir, in the context of the city, I do not. But on a personal note, my activation with the guard is on track to come to a close pretty soon. And so assuming that the epidemic or the national climate does not get any worse, I will be back home for good here shortly. So fingers crossed, I'm excited for that.
Outstanding. Well, 2020 is far from over, so we'll see what cards come up next. We'll put it that way.
That's right.
All right, thank you, councilman. We appreciate your service with the National Guard. I know it takes you away from your home and you're out there not knowing what you're going to do each day. But I greatly appreciate your service and still being able to take the time to join us for our meetings. So thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Councilman Bigliotti took just about everything I had to say this evening. I will mention, I talked to a couple firefighters and those from the auxiliary about their dinner offerings this week. I do encourage everyone, it's 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And they are seeking volunteers to help run food out to cars and such. So if you find yourself available in the evening, feel free to stop down, lend them a hand. Our firemen were out last night busy with a house fire over in Meadowbrook. That was handled very well by several different departments. Our police were the first to show up on the scene, followed shortly by our own fire department and others. Fortunately, it did not spread. Did cause significant damage to the home. Fortunately, it's not a total loss. And I believe they have family around that is able to help them. And I know Red Cross is involved as well to help them as they are displaced. So definitely keep them in your thoughts and prayers. It's unfortunate those houses are close together. It gets concerning when you hear about a fire of that magnitude in a development like that. With that, keep in mind Friday night, we do have the drive-in movie. I know Councilman Bigliotti, Councilman Hale offered to volunteer and help park cars. If anyone else is available, please come on by. It's a great thing. You know, being an elected official doesn't always mean just out there showing your face and saying a nice thing. Sometimes you have to actually lend a hand and, you know, tell people where to park or tell them what to do. So keep in mind, if you are available, we are accepting some more help out there. It did fill up pretty quickly. They got all 50 spots filled, I think within an hour and a half, if I'm not mistaken. So it's exciting. People are excited for it and we'll see what can be done in the future about doing any more of these. But I'm excited to see how it turns out. If there's nothing else, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second?
Very good. Councilman Hale with the motion, Councilwoman Fuller with the second. All in favor of adjourning signify with a thumbs up. That is unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you, council.